To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call meeting to order. Motion to move the agenda.
The move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Agenda for minutes from the past meeting.
I read them at home and they all looked pretty good, so I would move to approve.
All right, well, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Minutes approved. Any general public concerns? Seeing none? Uh, looks like we'll move on to some other extracurricular things down here while we wait for eight forty-five. Whatever you would like to look at.
Start with the sheriff's court report.
Okay, sounds good.
You should have a copy of that.
Yes.
Okay.
There's the story.
Easy to find, too.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All opposed?
Aye.
Are opposed? Sheriff's report?
Approved.
Speaking of veterans affairs, we have something there.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Any discussion? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Veterans court report. The meeting anyone here to do your quitclaim deed to the city of Addison.
Yep. This is from last week, um, this that law that you guys approved, giving to the little strip, the city of Addison, the county attorney, they need to get the quitclaim deed for us and it just needs to be signed by the chairman. And then I will notify it for you.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the chairman to sign the quitclaim deed to the city of Addison.
Sorry. Any discussion? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Quitclaim deed approved. Now we can hold on to something.
I'll notice that. We can change.
It's a video.
Yeah, I can put a cap there, but sign it the way you know you would sign it.
I'll get it signed right now when we're done with it.
Yep.
All right.
And then we'll have these two, so we'll have these out of the way.
We'll move.
And we'll stick their approved stamp because they don't have signatures on them.
Okay.
On a day like today and you're asking for flower money?
Yeah.
Did that give a toll to springy over here?
Springy comes, yeah.
Um, keep thinking.
Well, okay, well, Eric's doing that.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, the Center for Rural Affairs sent a packet of information, um, has to do with wind energy ordinance and icing and wind energy system. So I made a copy to put it with your papers if you want to look at that later. Not sure exactly what they're meaning. Did have a note from Homeward Housing and it, they wanted to request your continued support and annual contribution of a five thousand dollar cash local match as indicated in the Homeward Housing Trust Fund application to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one local housing trust fund program. So, um, we'll take that into consideration, I'm assuming, at budgetary. And they did ask, this was something different, nobody's ever asked, they wanted a copy of the board's approval of their request. So we'll bring that up. We'll talk some budgets and we'll see. We've never had anybody ask for, you know, you don't usually, you don't usually approve it in an actual meeting for the budget as a whole.
Yeah, house is part of the budget.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how to handle that. We'll figure it out.
So, is that my, Derek?
Yes, that looks good.
Good here on the veterans.
Good here, yeah.
And I.
And you gave me the quitclaim, so well, good. Awesome.
Any other miscellaneous stuff? I thought we could look at.
I don't think so.
Look at claims quick.
Yep, you could do that.
Okay, and everybody have a chance to look over claims. And basically add claims of a hundred and forty-one thousand, one forty-seven oh one, and drainage of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four sixty cents.
Mm-hmm.
And everything seems to be in order.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
I'll make, I'll second his motion.
Any further discussion? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Claims approved. Can we get those in there?
Yeah.
Is there anything else in there that we need to look at?
Nope.
Does anybody, everybody send back their, uh, work orders, signed work orders?
Mm-hmm.
Send all that in there? There you go.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yep, and I, everybody said they signed their work orders.
Okay.
Just something to let you get out.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Probably could do a committee report.
I will. Welcome back.
I had one meeting where they got canceled and that was on Thursday. That moved. So.
You went to the Humboldt County Council.
Oh, and City Hall, yeah, I guess, I didn't know if that's a meeting or not, but I attended the City Hall meeting on.
Workshop on Monday afternoon or evening, four thirty.
Thursday, I had CFR in Fort, uh, out of, down in Webster City. And we worked on our, going through our, uh, book list and updating all of the different, uh, policies and changes and I think there was like forty-seven or eight agendaized items, so.
Oh, wow. Long meeting.
Well, we got through it pretty quick. Once we got started on them, there, some of them were just changing some words and taking adding, but, uh, for the most part, everything's going well down there. Um, I think that this morning Shelley is coming for CFR, for their funding request for, for Humboldt County. The way the numbers and the, uh, things sound down there, they're staying pretty busy, which is good and bad, but I guess for the most part, it's all running according to plan, so.
Good, all right, well, I went to the, um, Monday, the Humboldt City Council meeting also. Um, Wednesday, we had our CSS Board meeting in Cresco, but none of the Western Quadrant could go, but we all participated by phone, which was a good thing. Um, so we're in this twenty-two county, um, board and we were supposed to have, uh, we were doing our budget that day and that's why it was so important to be there that day. And it's so hard on the phone because the audio visual is just awful when you're doing it and you're using a cell phone and you're trying to hear, you know, you call in there using somebody's cell, so it was awful. But anyway, we were having, we were supposed to have two million budgeted for our access center down in Fort Dodge and they, um, put it down to five hundred thousand. So Ms. Looney brought that up and then, so we got that back on, but the problem was, and I, and I'm still upset about this, is we chose to go, our thirty, with thirty-five eighteen is our per capita for mental health. We did go down to thirty-four because we did have a little bit of an access, but we don't know what it's going to cost us for the kids when that, when we get all that fully funded with the access center. You know, you don't know what hidden things are going to come up. Well, people on the Eastern Quadrant, um, somehow got it back on the agenda with the exec board and now it's lower to thirty dollars. So basically we lost two point five million in our budget, which I understand, um, the Eastern side has all of their infrastructure already all built up and everything and the Western Quadrant isn't as built up. So, and there is fewer counties on the Western side, but it kind of makes me upset when the other counties, oh, we got our stuff, so.
Yeah.
You know? So, um, we're going to have a meeting on, and then, so we got that all settled out. Um, the access center is going to be coming to, to Fort Dodge, um, and we're having a quadrant and rating next week to talk about, to make sure that we get it going and get things started. So it wasn't a fun phone conference and it was a three-hour one.
I was going to just ask.
Well, it took us forty-five minutes to argue about the budget and what was, and then it was another, I want to say thirty to forty minutes just for the, um, per capita. You know, it isn't that I want to charge, you know, have more, but, but I don't want our re, our reserves to be dropped down so low and then we're going to have to pop up our, you know, so, okay, everybody's going to be happy, oh, it went down, but then when we have to pop it back up, everybody's going to be, well, what it, yeah, what's this, you know, yo-yoing, you know, shouldn't you have thought of that a little bit better, so, you know?
Oh, the state's going to take over and it'll cost more anyway. And you won't have to worry about it, right?
I don't.
Or they say they will and then you guys will still have to.
Yeah, we're still going to have.
So is it going to be run through Trinity then?
No, it is, we, we've been told it's CFR. And they're working on, um, I think it's that land right in front of where there is right now, isn't it where the old colonial land was?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's issues with that because they found out.
Right.
We put an offer in to buy it. And then Tom Thumb has an easement on it to use it for Saturday, Sunday chicken dinners when they sell all, you know, when all the people come.
Right.
For parking. So you can't transfer the ownership when there's easement on it and they won't give up the easement, so.
Yeah, I heard that there's an issue with that. So I don't know, there's a lot to work out yet, but we do want, from what I understand, CFR is going to be heading that up. And it's really going to be a great, it's a subacute, it's so that anybody in the, um, in our region, they can take somebody to that place if there's a crisis. And so the police will only be detained like fifteen minutes, basically it's like a drop-off service. There'll be somebody right there that'll be able to take that person, no matter what's going on, you know, with them. Then they're also going to have, um, beds, of course, then to get them, you know, in and then they're going to have like teledoc type thing, you know, so that we can get psychiatric help right away if they need it. I mean, there's just so many things and we're thinking about, I think, what is it now, I think it's like five days or something like that that you can, is it three to five days you can keep somebody, but then you could also do extended care. So we're looking at also having the extended care. That hasn't been nailed down yet, but we're working on that, so. Western Quadrant is going strong.
He thought the good word.
[laughing]
Hope his strike holds after those three-hour phone.
Oh, my gosh, it was. Then it took a little longer, he had to keep saying, I can't hear what they're saying. [laughing]
Uh, Monday I went to the city of Humboldt workshop. Wednesday we're supposed to have a Midas meeting, but that was supposed to go until this week, so I got it this week. Uh, Friday morning I went to the Board of Health meeting, had a pretty good meeting. Uh, the sanitarium, David over there from Pocahontas gave his report. Uh, there's three tattoo parlors in the area. One of them is licensed, the other two has not passed their, or been inspected. They're not supposed to be working until they are inspected and they won't return any phone calls, so.
Imagine that.
You want a tattoo, you better be careful. Make sure it's clean. Uh, also we wondered where we was at on the tanning booth. Um, ordinance that you brought a sample over from Pocahontas and we wondered where we was at on it, so I'm going to check with John and find out if he's done anything with it. But, uh, other than that, everything's going good. Um, Michelle talked about the ambulance services. They are out of the hospital and they are, been real busy. They've got a new ambulance in, I guess, but she said that they're running busier and all get out because they're backing up. The other ambulances around the county. Bold and Redwick and Bore. So when they get called, Humboldt gets called, so they're running pretty tight right now. Other than that, everything's going good with that.
I saw the picture of the, at the hospital or the foundation, didn't they have it down there?
I'm not sure.
I think they had it, I don't know what, some pictures of it down in the fairgrounds area.
Yeah, they said it's a pretty nice unit. Good.
Monday the twentieth, attended the Humboldt City Council meeting workshop at evening. Uh, Thursday, the twenty-third, uh, in the evening, had an EMA board meeting. That's what I had this past week. So having gotten past eight forty-five, agendaized item of the public hearing for the county budget, budget amendment for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Make most of the open the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing open, discussion on the budget amendment.
Okay, there's not a lot we're amending this time, um, just a few little things that were getting in the minus and you need to take care of those as they come up. Um, when you go down to line eighteen, which is public safety and legal services, we amended that to include the work completed on the tower at the LEC. Line twenty-one, county environment and education, was amended to include the allocation to the animal shelter for the land purchase and for Midas dues. Uh, line twenty-three, government services to residents, was amended to include some increased per diem for the township officials. We had somebody budgeted in there, but when we increased the per diem, then it takes more out, so it uses it up faster, so we need to get a little money back in there. A non-program current is next on line twenty-five. We amended that to reflect the costs for Humboldt Recreation Center dues, which is offset by revenues incoming on the miscellaneous revenues above. So the amount of the twelve three sixty-nine on line twenty-five is offset by line twelve.
Up above.
Capital projects was previously amended, but not approved by resolution, this is the correction. When we did the budget amendment for secondary roads, this four hundred and thirty thousand was on there, but it was not on the final that you guys signed. So somehow that got missed. So we put it back on there and I may have been aware of it too, so he was, he knew. So the total amendment is for four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred. And that's it for this time.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred.
Okay, first, I guess.
Is there any public comment?
Oh, sorry about that, I was.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, here we go.
I'll second Dave's motion to close the public.
Any discussion? Okay, any discussion?
I'll burn this topic.
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. Now we need the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash four.
I will second Sandy's motion.
Any discussion on that? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Or do you remember it passed?
Okay, we'll put those corrections in.
I still have to find that somewhere.
And then this is where it's, I like here.
Peggy, I've gotten a couple of people, um, that have noticed your, our website is up and running and so last night, being the computer, whereas I am, I was snooping on there, it really looks nice.
Isn't it clean and fresh?
And I love those, some of those pictures are just, um, well, the picture of the courthouse with all the flags on it really, really looked nice, so.
Thank you so much again to Tom Tierney for doing the pictures for.
Did you ever, you never contacted me all these years.
Okay.
[laughing]
But we give it full credit for all the beautiful pictures.
That was, oh, they're gorgeous.
The picture is gorgeous, but.
Yes.
Um.
That is, uh, wonderful. And I also got a compliment about the ease of going through it.
Yeah, you can scroll through it with your phone and not have so many issues as you did before, going with page-based search.
Yeah.
So we're finding out a few little things, um, fixing a few little things this week, it hasn't been too bad. Um, there were a few little things in the beginning, we've got all the people who have the edit authorities, um, assigned their authority so they can go in and change the page and update things and put on there what they want to. Um, we have myself and Chris and Chris in my office with full authority to go in and change any page, so that if there's other things that need to be fixed, we can. Um, I did that because if I'm not here, then one of them can take over and do that. One of them's gone and the next one, yeah, we got at least three deep. Um, so everything should be okay.
And I like that when you pull up, open it up, the first, one of the first things is that someone has a, basically wants to permitting process, the complaint process, the, it's all.
Right.
Very easily followed, so I thought they did an awesome job.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully that part goes really well too. So I have yet to, I have to figure out how to update previous board minutes because it quit at, uh, September, I think September thirtieth is the last, when they pulled the last data.
Oh, okay.
So we have to get those additional, plus our meetings. The meetings were updated to the old site, but not to the new site, so I have to get on there this weekend and those all on. And then we should be all up to date and.
Good.
Well, I was going to send in a complaint, see how long it took, a supervis, say the, say the board supervisors or something, just see how long it took, but we got notified, but, but I thought, now I'll just not press my motion.
[laughing]
But it really does look nice.
It does look nice, yes, they did a great job with it. Good to have that part done.
Yes.
So there's always something else moving in the back.
Mm-hmm.
To get that, right?
I'm waiting for Shelley. Anyone else have anything, uh, that you can think of? All in.
Um, might let you know about yesterday, I came up to work on budgets and went to go in the door down here and the light usually has red on it when it's locked, it was completely blank. So I went over to the middle door and the same thing and the road recorder store, the same thing, and luckily the front door was okay and I could get in through there. So I come into work and pulled my computer up and it would let me get so far and then no further, it kept saying it wasn't connecting. So we have a twenty-four hour telephone service with solutions that you can call. Got four mark, he was just getting out of church. [laughing] It was twelve thirty, but he was just staying for a while to, to visit with people and, or Mike, I'm sorry. And he went home and got on his computer and was able to get me, uh, connected. We found out that the battery backup had died back there. There were about eight or ten things plugged into it and so it just, everything went when it went. So I went downstairs and we have a lot of power strips that we use at election time, so I pulled those upstairs and started unplugging stuff from there and plugging them into the power strips. And you could just see the lights coming back on and you could hear the fans whirring and it's like, oh, thank goodness, everything's running again. So we got it back up and running, but, and then that made all the power up here work. So one of those strips.
Oh.
Something was bad.
Yeah, yeah, the power, so we need a new power backup. So Mike said to give them a call today, uh, solutions and get it ordered, so that we have. So right now we have no backup other than just the power strip that's holding the plug in.
Wow.
So we want to get that in here as quickly as we can.
Certainly.
Yeah. We had some problems with those, um, battery backups. I, I know we had a nut, we had a second one, that was probably there six months ago, that went down also and we got rid of that one. Thought this one would be okay, we'll just go with one, well, no, this one went down and so I'm going to see if I can get some heavy-duty.
Do they have some age on them?
Yeah, yeah, they, we've been there for a while. So.
So you're going to get two of them?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to have two. Maybe the one, main one, have it be an extra heavy-duty one and then the backup be a little less, so if we, if it does go down, we've got something. The hard part is when it goes down and it affects the DOT stuff.
Yeah, it screws up everything.
Yeah, it does, it messes up everything. And we usually can get ours back up and running, but when it messes with the DOTs, then the DOT has to get on and they have to fix their fight.
Harder process.
A little harder process. Good to see all the lights come back on because I thought, oh, my goodness, wouldn't that be.
Yeah.
Fun to come in Monday morning and everything's down. And everything was working fine on Friday, the gal said, except for, there was a little light flicker, they said, later out in the afternoon, the lights kind of went down and came back up again and they don't know if that was something else going on and maybe that turned the battery back up to goofy.
Do you have to reset them after that if something does flicker and they went on for a little bit, is anything?
No, automatically, it's automatically reset.
Yeah.
Thank you. Frank Gotti.
I noticed those, where did they come from?
Those, I got like, all of his heart.
Oh.
The origin of his life.
I got those from a, um, guy out in Cincinnati that, I put his name on the statue on one of the bricks down there. It was a huge wrestling thing.
Okay.
So his son does, uh, things with.
Hi, Shelley.
Uh, so he sent me a sweatshirt with Frank Gotti's picture on it.
Oh.
And those pork mugs in Christ, I opened them up, my wife's like, well, those are beautiful, what are you going to do with them?
[laughing]
And I don't worry, they might go in the kitchen.
Nice.
So I brought them up here.
What are you talking about?
We always like stuff for, especially hometown kids.
Yeah.
I asked one before I forget about it, like that, so it's the battery backup.
Oh, okay.
So it would only kick in if power is lost.
Right.
At some point in time.
Looks like the same thing.
Power was momentarily lost, it kicked it to the battery backup and it did not.
Good, how are you?
It was, it was long and then it drained battery.
Well, they said.
So with the weekend, it probably was somewhere in there.
Something's not right with it.
That's obvious.
Because it shouldn't have, if the power comes back on, the battery backup, power.
Should.
It didn't.
Yeah.
So something, yeah, what you said getting yours by all means, because you have to, you can't have.
I don't wear an western shirt.
No, no, and I think.
Especially with the weather like it is, if you have a storm going through.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon.
I always have something out here. The other day we kind of had a breezy.
Glad you got it over and over again. And you know what the fountain is and you get.
We hit the morning yesterday and it was, it was hard to.
Maybe they're just going for that.
It was blowing off all the trees.
Please.
Once you got into town.
I just wanted to clarify, the degree of water is bad.
I don't, but thank you.
It's only if you believe.
Right, right.
The noise was.
Well, Shelley?
I'm going to go ahead.
Yes, by all means.
Hey, I'm Shelley Zabel and I, uh, I work at Community and Family Resources and I'm the prevention supervisor. So each year we kind of go through what we've been doing and then, um, we go through our funding request for the next fiscal year. Uh, this is a little bit different because normally our fiscal year runs from July one to, um, June thirtieth. And our fiscal year, of course, does run that way, but our contract with the state, um, you can kind of see in that first paragraph, that the contract with the state actually began a year ago in January. So these numbers that we have on here, um, for last fiscal year have part of the old contract and part of the new contract on them. And the new contract is very different than what we've been doing. Um, so we had eighty-three hours of face-to-face prevention and we served eight hundred and eighty-eight people. Um, that is a little bit low because with the integrated provider network, which is what IDTH is now calling, um, our block group services for substance abuse prevention and treatment, um, their, their plan is that they're retraining. And that was a recommendation at the, um, from the federal level, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration, Services Administration came in and did like a site review and their recommendation was that Iowa Department of Public Health do retraining. Um, so even though I've done prevention for about twenty years, I got to take some of the very, very beginning classes that some of my new staff have. Um, with this, uh, change in the contract and the way the state is, uh, doing things through the Department of Public Health, we did expand a little bit. We, uh, acquired two additional counties, so we have been in the hiring process, um, to try to get all of that covered efficiently. Uh, and I think that at the beginning of March, we might finally be fully staffed. We had some people that were really good and they, they took jobs elsewhere when they're, you know, like Cory was, Cory Keller, or, oh, she married someone, it was Cory Dewey. Um, she provided lots of services in Humboldt County, um, so when she, when she moved, you know, you always lose some of those things that have been going on. Uh, but these are just some of the things that we've done. Um, we did presentations with service clubs for prescription and over-the-counter drug abuse. Too Good For Drugs is, uh, the curriculum that the school district here, both public and private, really seem to like. Too Good For Drugs is the curriculum that the school districts here, both public and private, really seem to like. It's a nice, interactive one, although it does not, it does not meet the evidence-based standard now with the new contract. So that is some of the things that we're using the dollars for from the county. Because we can't provide it any longer under the IPN grant. Marijuana and THC presentations at the middle school level. We've done binge drinking, methamphetamine. We did have a World of Kids grant, so we did some medication safety at some community events, which is very popular. And then we did presentations on gambling. And anyone that would've been in treatment for that first six months would've gotten Money Smart. Which is a, it's an FDIC curriculum. These are some of the things that we can offer through the Integrated Provider Network. And so we offered those different curriculums to the school districts this year before we offer anything else. Because they are evidence-based, that's where they would like to see all of our curriculum go. And the only difference between evidence-based and research-based is that it's been tried and tested numerous times with real students and they get the same results. I already talked about that. But this alcohol, methamphetamine, marijuana, prescription drugs, gambling and tobacco, those are the substances that, that we have as priority substances for our entire area. The state is, that's the whole state that's working on those substances. Through the Integrated Provider Networks, we are opening up all of our trainings at no charge. So people are able to come in, you know, for their professional development. That gets opened up and usually we send it out, it's posted on social media, but it's also sent out like to the Hamilton, Humboldt and Wright Provider Network. So we get a lot of people there for professional development. And this is part of what the IPN is also doing is we will be doing a needs assessment in this eight county area. We get interviewed, two hundred and thirty different people. And then we'll compile all of that and then that will give us direction for that year. It's going to be a big project. I've never done, I've never been involved in one that is that large. That's a lot of people sit interviewing and get ideas about. And these are the areas that we will be focusing on. Again, the state gave us that direction. We're seeing more deaths with adults as far as drinking. That is increasing once again. Youth marijuana, it's increasingly difficult to convince people that it's not good for them when we have a lot of states around us that are allowing it for medical and recreational use. And then we have all the edibles coming out, so people are experimenting with everything that they can. Adult prescription misuse, and that is in the sixty-five year and up population. Adult problem gambling and youth tobacco. Which vaping, vaping is up a course also, even though we have some law changes. Again, I, I mentioned this earlier, is that we, we of course, offer everything that goes under the IPN first. But the local school districts really like the Too Good For Drugs. We wish we could get them to be an evidence-based program. We also had some interest here real recently in bullying. So one of my staff came up and did some bullying presentations with school staff and students. And that was at the Catholic school here. So we're requesting the same amount for the next fiscal year and it's just to support staff time, supplies and travel. And then these last few pages, I did not bring someone from the treatment side with me, but I have some treatment information here, too. These are just additional things that we offer. Mental health first aid, and that is being offered for adults, youth, veterans, higher ed and first responders. That was a state upgrade that I wrote and we, we did receive it, so we're really excited. And it is being offered in all of our counties and no charge for people. So if anyone is interested, there is a packet and we have one person.
I think that's the one that the ministerial board is trying, well, they waited, they got the information before Christmas and with Christmas coming, they wanted to wait till after the first of the year. But I'll try to remind somebody that we were gonna set up, I thought it was like a middle of the week was what they wanted.
He's, he's very good.
Is that an eight-hour class?
It is.
I didn't remember something, right? But I think that's what they're planning on doing is they're, they're trying to work with the dean and the sheriff's department and some of the people that.
They'll be excited because he's been out, you know, and we've done some advertising. It was a little slow to get started and some, some of the places said, you know, we've already had that training. But I certainly can't hurt people.
Well, we had, one of our ministers said that they had taken it and they highly recommended it. So that was kind of a.
You guys, we could get some of the teachers and admin to do that also.
Well, we thought maybe a Saturday would work better, but they said usually the middle of the week is easier to try to fit the schedule. So, you know, I think they'll, we'll try to get it done.
Yeah, good. I know another, another one in the serial associations I want to see is when Boone County is interested, too. And he will go wherever they want to do it. He'll work with them for schedule. He's a former teacher, so he's really good at it. Oh, we do have the State Opioid Response Grant and prevention is involved in that. We have the North Central Iowa Opioid Task Force. We had to focus in on, like Ames has one task force and then the Fort Dodge area has all of the other counties. And so we've had one of your sheriffs come over for that. We've been over and we've done the opioid and narcan training for overdose. I know that they went to the school. They have some school nurses, I wanna say, do you guys have a school resource officer? So that person was there, too. It gets a little confusing when you do all of these, the same five years, right? And they're all individualized, so. We do some math clinics that is open, that's medication-assisted treatment. So opioids are of course, what we're focusing on there. And then we'll come and do just regular presentations on opioids. Because a lot of people still don't understand, you know, you're taking an opioid. It shouldn't be for long-term and there's a lot of dangers in continuing it long-term. And then we did recently get a State Opioids Response Grant for corrections. So we have someone that will be working, I don't think they're hired yet. We just got that like December first, I think. I wanna say that that is a five-year grant after this initial ten months. And then they will be working with the correction system. So whether it's probation or parole or, we have two corrections, you know, sites in our counties that we serve. But people that are just coming out of incarceration are two hundred times more likely to overdose. So it's really working with those people to get them into services immediately and get them connected. You don't always set those people up for success. So I think that's gonna be really helpful to people. And then another contract that we have in prevention is with, it's Iowa State Extension, but it is Partners in Prevention Research Science Institute. So have you guys heard about like strengthening families? Okay, so Dr. Spoke is the one that is the director of that center. And so we have, we've been working with Dr. Lisa Shanker on this steps toward opioid misuse prevention. And so it's really working with extension people to get them out, and it's a statewide, a statewide contract. So we are working with other behavioral health organizations to get them to work with local extension. Local extension is where a lot of rural people will go. They have great programs and they are good partners, so we really enjoy doing that, too.
Well, anything with Iowa State, I can imagine to be top-notch. Just my assumption.
Yeah. Well, we really enjoy working there and, you know, what we think is kind of basic, you know, we're getting to share that with extension across the state. We've done workshops like Orange City and we've been all over doing that. And then a lot with vaping. It started with opioids, but what we see is that, you know, we're really fortunate in Iowa that we have done a good job of preventing that from actually getting here to the extent that it has in other states. Okay, and then for treatment. And I'm prevention, but I'd be happy to take back any questions that I couldn't answer. We do house someone here, she, Lori Lawman is her name. And she serves in this office on Wednesdays. So she sees people then. Thirty percent of the people that we saw in treatment services came from the Humboldt County area in fiscal year nineteen. And this is kind of some of our big exciting news, is that we did get to open up our new building in June. You know, Bruce has been there. Has anyone else happened to go up and take it? Yeah, it's very nice.
It is.
It is, and they're really busy. So rather than three locations within Fort Dodge to serve outpatient, inpatient and adolescent, we have one main campus there. We have a detox unit, we have adult residential, adolescent residential, outpatient, and then we have the math clinics. And then we have a crisis stabilization unit on top of that. So there's just kind of the breakout. One of the bigger things about this that is super nice for people is that we do have two gender-neutral rooms. So if we have people that are transitioning, they don't really feel like they're safe on one wing or the other. So they have separate bathrooms, separate sleeping area, just to try to, I mean, they are really at risk for a lot of substance use issues. So doing whatever we can to make that easier for them. And then we have sixteen adolescent spots. If you've been in our building, you already know that the classroom there, the on-site school is very, very nice. He does a great job. Scott Vernhardt is our teacher. And some of the other things that we have that we weren't able to really have in the older building. We do have increased security and we have separate block wings. So we're doing gender-specific programming. Women's needs and treatment are gonna be different than males' needs. And then we are offering mental health services there to the faculty. And then you can kinda see, this last page of the chart. And the last two years, the last two fiscal years, methamphetamine has actually been the primary drug. Which that probably doesn't surprise you guys living in a rural community in Iowa. But it's always been alcohol. And then marijuana was always second. And alcohol and marijuana haven't changed, I wanna say, thirty-eight percent of the previous to this year. But, you know, we were surprised to see methamphetamine rise higher to the, but that is now, that is spreading. That is kind of national now. That's not just in Iowa or Midwest areas. Do you guys have any questions? Oh, I was gonna tell you, too. Sorry. Normally I would give you guys kind of an update on the Iowa U survey data for this county. Humboldt School District did not participate in Iowa U survey last year. It will be offered again, it's offered every two years. So it will be offered in twenty twenty-one, so every end of the fall. If there's any way you can encourage people to participate in that at the school district level. It really gives us good guidance as to where we should be focusing our time and attention. And I just kinda put together some of the versions and different things that we're using.
You said you added two counties?
We did. We, we had Boone and Story. We've always had Boone and Story for gambling prevention, but we have it for primary prevention, too, now. So it's been, we had a lot of growth between adding those two counties and then adding.
Well, that's a big population.
It is, it is. And we also added that mental health grant. So for prevention, we, we like doubled in like a year. So that's, and, you know, we spread people out in the county, that's a lot, too. A lot to have going on.
Have you had much issues with sports betting now that that's illegal, or legal in Iowa?
We haven't heard about it locally, but it is increasing at state level. That's going to be interesting, too. I'm really watching like all of the marijuana numbers and, and the sports betting, too, because that's very new.
Michelle said the other night in her, we always get her goal, what we're gonna do for, try to work towards. One of their goals is we're trying to get our name out more. And I said, well, how do you do that, you know? You don't run ads other than you talk to sheriffs, police departments, hospitals, whatever, and let them know. And she said, well, those are the things that we're trying to do. So other than the fact that we have, you know, we have this new facility, we are able to take more clients. We are closer than going across the state. But those are things that they're working on to get the CFR name out in them.
It is hard, especially as a nonprofit, you can't spend lots of your dollars to do that. We've been fortunate with the math clinic that we can, we do have some advertising there. But advertising is big. It's like five hundred dollars plus for a billboard for a month and things like that.
And I think that's the reason why word of mouth for us, you know, when we have success, that we have to make sure that we, when you are talking to someone, someone, there's lots of people that have issues. We always know that CFR's name is thrown into the hat so that they can at least help families deal with issues that we all deal with, so.
We do, and lots of people don't realize that they have someone close to them, you know, until something tragic happens. So it is important and you're right, word of mouth is, it's better than any advertising.
Well, it's one of those things that's always been taboo, you don't wanna talk about it. But by the same token, there's this need that, you know, we just don't know the six and a half million dollar facility because we like the location of that property there, so let's build something on, you know? And it is getting used, so.
That's something all of us need to do, is, you know, encourage, it's not taboo anymore. We really need to be speaking about it and encouraging.
And we are doing things like, they call it class standards, but it's culturally and linguistically appropriate language. It's like, we don't call people alcoholics anymore. We say that they're a person with an alcohol use disorder. And that's, that is a big change for people. So they're really putting a focus on that to make people feel like they're welcome and that change is possible.
Well, we appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. Lot of information in a really short time. If you have questions, please feel free to give me an email or send me, or send me an email or give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Drive safe.
Turn on my headlights.
Turn on your headlights.
Thank you so much.
It's getting foggy here.
It does.
Do you have anything else that we didn't get through?
No.
Anyone else have anything we didn't get through?
Um, I've had numerous, and I went out on a little drive Saturday, the gravel roads. To say aren't very good shape are, is an understatement. They, you know, with the, the snow and then getting packed and a lot of farmers are driving, trying to get corn that they've got contracted. So, you know, be careful, please be careful, the, the roads are, our guys are out doing what we can do to try to scuff that up and, and to be able to, but we sure could use a couple of warm days to try to make that stuff a little mushier than what it is.
Off there, yeah. Lot of slick, lot of slick areas, so fortunately.
It's everywhere. We were at Eagle Grove and then going back down to Fort Dodge Saturday. They had a lot of black, that, I don't know what that blacktop, is it D? No, we were going to D, I can't remember what it is, but it's, it was rutted.
Every county has their share.
I mean, it was, yeah. And that was on a blacktop, so, or cement, I guess, it is pavement.
Just be careful.
It was pretty bad.
And we appreciate what our guys are doing, cause they are out doing what they can do, so. That's all I have.
One thing, our zoning administrator, Randy, I think he's on vacation, but, and of course, honestly, he sends us an update quite often. Talk to him about that right before he left on vacation and he will want to get together with us here in the fairly near future, probably sometime in February.
That's right. Email that we got.
And I talked to him, he says, well, there's just some things that I just kinda wanna get, you know, and he's done that before, kind of an update. And there'll be some discussion with what Randy's been up to and some of our building permits and such, so. I think he'll get ahold. So, I think he'll get a hold and put himself on the agenda here somewhere in the fairly near future. So, other than that
I'm making most of it in here.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?